Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. This regular city council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and Assembly Bill 361, which allows a virtual meeting process for local jurisdictions under a declared state of emergency. This city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please? Yes, Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Here.
Mayor Gibbons? Here. Thank you very much, and may I ask all for your attention for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mariana Ferran Gutierrez, CEO of Tyco Coffee Roasters in Campbell, on behalf of the Latin Community in Recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mariana. I'd like to read the proclamation that we have here this evening. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, culture, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, an observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon all of the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas, the day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin America countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. And whereas Hispanics refers to a person who is from or a descendant, someone who is from a Spanish-speaking country, and Latino, Latina, or Latinx refers to a person who is from or a descendant of someone who is from a country in Latin America. And whereas, we celebrate their countless contributions by recognizing all Hispanic and Latinx American residents who contribute to our neighborhoods and businesses by making the City of Campbell a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. And whereas, the City of Campbell employees are proud to have an ancestral heritage from Argentina, Bolivia, Honduras, El Salvador, Mexico, Nicaragua, Puerto Rico, and Spain. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Gibbons, Mayor of the City of Campbell, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month. So, thank you, Mariana, and if you have any thoughts, please feel free. We appreciate your being here with Tyco Coffees.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbons, and thank you, everyone. I feel honored to be invited to the meeting today to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm very happy to be part of the City of Campbell, to be part of the business community and community in general of a town that is, a city that is diverse, that is respectful, that is always beautiful and has so many things to share with everyone. And I look forward to continue contributing and sharing with all of you in Campbell. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I know you had a great, I think, National Coffee Day last week and International Coffee Day on Friday, so I hope everyone got to enjoy.
Thank you, yes, we did.
Thank you, take good care. Yes, Council Vice Mayor, there's Resnikoff? You're muted.
Just was gonna say, thank you very much, appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
And now, we have a special presentation this evening. It is the presentation by the Youth Commission relating to their 2021-2022 work plan and goals. It is the recommended action that the city receive this presentation from the Youth Commission. And I believe Recreation Specialist and Staff Liaison to the Youth Commission, Julie Parazzi?
Parazzi.
Parazzi? Thank you. Will introduce the Commission Chair and Vice Chair for their presentations. Julie?
Thank you, yes, I will share my screen for our short presentation. All right. Hopefully, everyone can see that now.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hello, yes, my name is Julie Parazzi, and I am the Staff Liaison for Youth Commission. We are very excited to share our work plan for the 2021-2022 term with you this evening. Representing the Commission today, we have our Chair, Amelie Arango, and Co-Chair, Emily Tovar. I will let them tell you all about the Commission's important intentions for the term.
Hello, Councilmembers and Mayor Gibbons, thank you for taking the time to hear from us today.
Of course, thank you for coming.
Our team this year is made up of 13 middle school and high school Campbell residents who are excited to represent the voices of the youth of the city.
One of our Commission's goals this term is to assist, advocate, and volunteer for events that support community building and wellness. This will look like supporting citywide events by volunteering to assist with setup, leading activities, and cleanup. Some potential projects we have in mind are October Fun Run, Storytown with Santa, February Fun Run, and the Food Drive and Toy Drive.
Another goal this term is to support health and wellness programs for teens. We will achieve this goal by hosting events that focus on mental health, positive life skills, and physical well-being. Some potential projects we are considering are Teen Wellness Week, Yoga in the Park, and Vaping Education.
Our third goal is to support academic, college, and career aspirations for teens. This goal calls attention to events that develop support for teen academics, college preparation, and career readiness. Some events and projects we have in mind are the Job Fair, Financial Planning, Workshops, Study Hall, and Promoting Community Colleges.
An important goal the Commission wanted to include this year is to raise teen awareness of social justice issues and ways they can make a difference. This goal aims to host events that focus on social justice issues such as climate change, minority rights, and voter rights, as well as work towards finding solutions to them locally. Potential projects for this term include Arbor Day Tree Planting, Trash Pickup, Being an Ally, and Activism Toolkits.
The final goal for our work plan is to promote local community and city government involvement for teens. This goal focuses on organizing events that provide youth and teens opportunities to engage in local politics and community building. Ideas for this include Coffee and Politics Local Holiday Gift Guide, A Teen Friendly Reminder Business Award, and Early Voter Registration.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Are there any questions about our work plan goals for this term?
Councilmember Lopez?
Not a question, but just thank you for the presentation, really excited to hear about this. And I also want to mention, I'll give at the end of the meeting a report in the League of, California League of Cities Conference, but as part of that, the Campbell Youth Commission received an award for our Coffee and Politics Series. So, and I know you're all coming on new this year, so I'm sure you'll live up to those big shoes and the excellent work that our Youth Commissioners put in. So, thank you, and thank you, Julie, for your work staffing.
Councilwoman Landry?
I just want to say, you guys are doing a fabulous job. Just looking at your presentation says how wonderful you guys are doing, this very professional. It seems like you have a lot of things on your plate, and I know you're gonna accomplish them, and congratulations on the Coffee and Politics Award. Thank you all for your help.
And I'm gonna chime in, and Councilmember Lopez, I think there were a couple of awards because I also received notice that the cities of Cupertino, Saratoga, and Campbell received the prestigious Helen Putnam Award for Youth Focused on Political Forums. And this has been for the Pizza and Politics event that the three cities and your Youth Commissions have come together every, I think, every two years to do. And I'm looking forward to having one this year, maybe soon anyway. So, thank you for all of the energy and enthusiasm and outside-the-box thinking that council needs to hear and know, and thank you so much for encouraging young people to become engaged in politics. As the phrase goes, you are our future, and the more you know, the better our future is going to be. And in terms of jobs, I'm looking forward to hearing about all the job fairs, talking about climate change, job opportunities, trades that support those kinds of climate change actions that we all need to take. So, thank you so much, and we'll look forward to hearing more from you this year.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
And we will now go to the next portion of the meeting, which is Communications and Petitions. There are none. We now go to Oral Requests. This is a portion in the meeting which is reserved for persons wishing to address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the Council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the Council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the Council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And Madam Clerk, do we have any oral requests?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two signed-up speakers this evening. The first is Mr. Tommy Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, welcome, hi.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Very faintly, can you turn up your volume?
How is that, is that better?
Much better, much, much better, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, hello to all, thanks for your time. My name is Tommy Miller, Public Works Division. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Service Center and my fellow Campbell family. Many of us, including myself, have grown up in Campbell and love our gem of a town. It makes it rewarding to work hard and help Campbell grow and stay functioning as nicely as it does. But for the first time in many years, we are not feeling the love back. We are currently in negotiations and feel like we are being mistreated. The opposite side of the table is imposing roughly an eight-to-nine percent pay cut to eighty-five percent at least of our team. The city has a need to get into compliance on a certain regulation, and us as a whole want to help, just as we have in the past with furloughs and such. But with that being said, we do not feel it's right what they are doing. I've been on a negotiating team for almost 10 years, and the city's representatives are basically wiping the past bargaining agreements off of the table. What I mean is, due to the fact that we have agreed on certain monies to go to insurance rather than raise per hour because we receive cash and loop payment and opt-out payments, while also helping the guys with families, so it was a win-win. Just last contract, the two parties agreed on placing us in the fifth place out of a 10-11 city survey. If the current city's representatives get their way, we will be back into ninth place. This is our livelihood, and roughly an $1,100 pay cut per month is outrageous, during a pandemic no less. I have a special-needs stepson with a compromised immune system, but yet I'm still at work cleaning homeless encampments, playing Frogger in traffic. My Parks teammates are still cleaning up needles, spraying pesticides, et cetera. All the while, other businesses have received pandemic bonuses, hazard raises, while we are being offered a pay cut. The union has tried to be creative in ideas to get the city into compliance along with mitigating this loss of wage that we depend on. But we are met with a stone wall at every step by the city's negotiating team. We ask that you please rethink your approach and help us work as a team to come to a well-rounded solution to this very, very stressful and detrimental situation. We have already lost several great employees, great people in this world that were very good at their job. Let's please resolve this before we possibly lose any more of our Campbell family, team, our friends. I appreciate you guys hearing me, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming this evening, Tommy, and we will then move on to our next speaker.
Ms. Kathy Faulkner?
Yes, Ms. Faulkner, hello, please, can you hear us? We can't hear you yet.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's good, thank you so much.
Hello, Councilmembers and Mayor Gibbons. I'm here to appeal the removal, the planned removal of majestic redwood tree on 1231 Harriet Avenue. It's been scheduled for removal for the planned sidewalk. Four other trees have already started to be removed. So, this is one of the last trees in the line. It is the most beautiful, tallest, and furthest from the sidewalk. This lovely tree at 1231 Harriet is probably 150 years old. It's a 48 inches in girth and four stories high. It's robust and healthy-looking. After talking to one of the project engineers, I'm not convinced that a new sidewalk would hurt this massive old growth, as indicated in one study. It doesn't make sense to remove this tree. The tree right next to it is also a big redwood, and it has a road just a few inches away, a sidewalk on the other side, a few inches away. So, to me, that indicates that these trees can withstand a sidewalk nearby without hurting it. This beautiful tree does much to enhance the neighborhood and the quality of life for everyone that lives nearby. It adds a calming effect to the neighborhood with its beauty. It cleans the air, adds a fragrance. It's a host to many animals that live there, especially the wild falcons that I've seen and the wild parrots. It's not directly in the way of the proposed sidewalk. And please, if at all possible, I urge to save the tree. And the whole community would benefit. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Kathy Faulkner. I believe staff is working on a response for you. City Manager, I think you can follow up and have staff contact Mrs. Faulkner.
We'd be glad to do that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and as the phrase goes, time is of the essence. All right, any other comments?
No, Madam Mayor, that was our last signed-up speaker.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Council Announcements. COVID-19 Pfizer booster shots are now available for eligible individuals in Santa Clara County for those who received the initial Pfizer vaccination shot at least six months ago. While appointments are required for San Jose and surrounding locations, drop-in appointments are available at DePaul Health Center in Morgan Hill. In addition, many doctors' offices and pharmacies are now offering COVID-19 boosters. For location information or to schedule an appointment, please visit www.sccfreefax.org. California COVID-19 Rent Relief. Applications are still available. Apply today to reduce your risk of eviction. The California COVID Rent Relief Program helps income-eligible households with rent and utilities. There are also resources for landlords as well as homeowners. To find out more about this program, please visit https://housing.ca.gov. October 10th is World Mental Health Day. In a given year, one in five people in the United States will experience a mental health issue. If you are feeling anxious or depressed, reach out for help. You can find resources at www.mentalhealth.gov and www.nami.org. Consider setting up the, excuse me, the Not OK app for help now. Or if you feel you're in crisis, call the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 800-273-8255. The city's Clerk's Office is accepting applications for the Historic Preservation Board and the Rental Increase Fact Finding Committee. To find out more about these boards and committees, and when the applications are due, please contact the city Clerk's Office at 408-866-2117, or visit the city's website, Fall Garden Concert Series on September 17th at 2:00 p.m. The Campbell Museums is hosting the Gypsy Swing and Jazz. Tickets are now available at www.camblemuseums.com. The Campbell Historical Museum and Ainsley House offers many opportunities for volunteers and interns. Individuals interested in history, decorative arts, historic gardens, or historic preservation will find volunteering an exciting way to help the museum and meet new people. For more information, please visit www.camblemuseums.com. All Santa Clara County Library locations will be closed on Monday, October 11th for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Book drops will be available for returns. There are two new story walks, I Spy Treasure Hunts and From Head to Toe. One is located near the pool at the Campbell Community Center, and the other is near athletic fields. Children follow and read the pages from these books as they are guided to the new temporary library entrance. There are also new colorful flags around the community center and at the Winchester Boulevard entrance to highlight the library's temporary location. For more information about the library, please visit www.sccl.org. All right, and we are now at the portion of the meeting which is the Consent Calendar. We have items three through eight. Are there any members of the public or council wishing to pull an item? Nothing from the public. If there's nothing from the council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent items, items three through eight.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Councilwoman?
I will make a motion to approve Consent Calendar.
There is a motion from Councilwoman Landry, and a second from Councilmember Bybee?
Yes.
Thank you. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye, thank you all. Sorry, frog in my throat. Public Hearings and Introduction of Ordinances. There is a special item on this agenda, and it will begin our discussions at 8:00 p.m., so we'll have a slight pause. Please have members of the public be allotted up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. Applicants and appellant's and their representatives may be allotted up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to three minutes maximum for closing statements. Items requested and recommended for continuance are subject to the council's consent. So, item number nine, which is regarding the redistricting of the Campbell City Council's district borders, is required to start at 8:00 p.m. So, we have about a six-minute pause in the meeting.
Mayor Gibbons, would you like to take an item out of order during this time, or would we like to just pause?
I think just pause is acceptable, thank you, okay. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you all for your patience. This is an important item on our agenda and for the community as a whole. This is an item, get the right page so I read it correctly. This is an item number nine, to receive input from the community on redistricting of the City Council district boundaries. The recommended action is for the council to receive this input, and it will begin with and it will begin with an introduction with the city clerk Dusty Christopherson and a presentation by Dr. Jeff Tilton, Senior Consultant with National Demographics Corporation. And with that, please begin.
Thank you. Let me share my screen with you all. Can you see? Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you tonight represents the second of four required public hearings for the 2021 City of Campbell redistricting process. It's a brief background. The City of Campbell formed districts in 2019 as a result of a complaint relating to California Voting Rights Act. An extensive public outreach effort was made at that time using the available 2010 federal census data to develop our current five council districts. State law requires each jurisdiction with district-based elections to update their district boundaries every 10 years based on the most recent federal census data. Due to the pandemic, this year census data was delayed. The data was released from the state just a week ago and is currently being analyzed by N D C, the city's contracted demographer, before being uploaded into our mapping tool for use. Council met on August third and voted to forego the use of formal redistricting commission and approved an outreach plan for the 21 redistricting effort. Council held the first of the four required public hearings on September seventh, 2021, and this meeting represents the second. This meeting represents, excuse me, this meeting again represents the second public hearing and the redistricting process. Its purpose is to update the community and to receive feedback about what neighborhoods and/or communities of interest should be taken into consideration while adjusting the district boundaries. The consultant with us tonight will provide an overview of the entire redistricting process, the mapping tool which will be available on a dedicated webpage. The city clerk's office continues to reach out to residents and business owners in the city to share information about this redistricting effort and to encourage participation. Formal public hearing notices were published in both English and Spanish and social media posts were done using fun colorful graphics. Direct outreach was also made to neighborhood associations to encourage participation and to share the information with their mailing lists and interested neighbors. McClark's office hosted an outreach table at the farmer's market on Sunday, September twenty sixth. As a reminder to those watching at home tonight, residents can participate in this process by providing comments on the community of interest worksheet by emailing redistricting@campbell.ca.gov attending a public hearing or workshop. And following Dr. Tilton's presentation tonight, staff is seeking feedback from council on the remaining outreach schedule of events, specifically the community workshops. Whether the extensive outreach previously planned will be necessary if the updated demographics do not indicate substantive change to the district boundaries is needed. This information is important for city staff to perform the proper outreach and to do mailings and other notifications. So with that, if Dr. Tilton, if you'd like to take over.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again. As Dusty had mentioned, this is the second of four public hearings. It's essentially a repeat of the first public hearing, what we call pre-draft map hearings. And the intention is to educate the public and to solicit input on communities of interest and neighborhoods. We don't even talk about or look at maps, et cetera, excuse me, on these two initial hearings. After we conclude these two hearings, then we can start talking about drafting maps with a little bit of a caveat. As Dusty mentioned, the federal census was released August twelfth. California then adjusted those census data to where the inmates in the California prison system were reallocated to the jurisdictions to where they resided prior to being incarcerated. Those data came out on September twentieth, actually twelve something on A M on September twenty first. And N D C, National Demographics Corporation, found a few abnormalities with the data that was sent out. We informed the statewide database of those abnormalities and it corrected the abnormalities and released a second set of data, or a second version, I should say, on September twenty seventh. Now, what does that mean with respect to drafting maps? Folks could draft maps at any time. The only individuals who cannot draft maps are staff of the City of Campbell and staff of National Demographics Corporation, as we have to wait three weeks from that September twenty seventh date, which is not really a big issue because we have plenty of time. Since our deadline is April seventeenth, 2022, and we are definitely going to meet that deadline. We will come back with draft maps after all the community outreach and participation in the public hearings, et cetera. We'll come back with draft maps February first, 2022. And the goal there is for council to narrow down the draft maps to finalists. Whether it's one or three, it's up to council to bring back to the March, excuse me, March first public hearing to where it is hoped that council will make a decision on a new map for the next 10 years. As I mentioned previously, we must follow particular rules and laws. We must clearly follow the federal laws. The idea is to have equal population in each of the council districts. We must follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, making sure that there's no discriminatory practices. We don't want to dilute the voting strength of the protected class. And we want to have no racial gary mandating in this process. Now we shift to California's criteria as listed in the Fair Map Act that was signed after the City of Campbell moved to district. In this particular order, we must have maps that are geographically contiguous. To the extent possible, we do not want to divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. We want to have easily identifiable boundaries and we want the districts to be compact. We do not want to see tentacles reaching out from one district to another, which begs the allegations and accusations of political gary mandating. And we know we shall not favor or discriminate against a political party. Now, if we could answer yes to the column there on the left and the middle column, then we can look at some of the other traditional redistricting principles. However, it's going to be a task to make sure that we meet the spirit of the federal law and the Fair Map Act, looking at draft maps coming before you starting in February. So a big part of the work between now and when you receive your first draft maps in February is what are the neighborhoods in the City of Campbell? What are some of the geographic boundaries? We'd love to hear from the community on that and as you do your workshops, as you go to the farmers, as folks attend the farmer's markets and stop by the booth and all that, we'd love to get all that kind of information. You saw the, on Dusty's presentation, there's a, what we call a C O I, or Communities of Interest, document that folks can submit that information as well. But we're looking at things like what are the highways, you know, the freeways, the major roads, waterways, et cetera, that are landmarks that folks can identify as boundary markers for the respective districts. When it comes to communities of interest, it's really what is an area in the city that has a shared social or economic interest? And I always use the example of homeowners association because it's clearly they have a shared interest. And there might be other areas in the City of Campbell who have shared social and economic interests as well. We know that communities of interest may not include relationships with political parties incumbent or political candidates. So we'd love to fill up this sheet here. Actually, we'd love to fill up a couple of these sheets as staff work with the community on their outreach program and maybe get some comments from council as well. It's part of the tools that Dusty mentioned. There is a review tool. I'm sure you had it when you went through the process last time where council or any member of the community can look at a particular website that'll show all the maps that have been submitted, the draft map, and make comparisons if they'd like. They can layer them on top of each other, just see the differences of those maps that have been submitted, the draft. Those mapping tool that the City of Campbell has decided to use is a great tool. Ken, we're finding that the popularity of this particular tool is just outstanding because it's so easy. And it really is, it's a click and drag of coloring. Where do you want the districts to be, these five districts? And they're in five different colors. And as they are coloring in these districts with their computer mouse, you can see that there's a population figure that starts to color in as well that lets you know where the ideal distribution is for each district in the county, excuse me, in the city. With that in mind, the actual data did come out, as I mentioned, in the current district team, a situation we have right now with council, we use the 2010 census data. And the total data for 2010 was thirty nine thousand, three hundred and forty nine. The 2020 census data yielded a population or census population of forty four thousand and twenty seven with an increase of four thousand, six hundred and seventy eight. So once we get to being able to provide data for all the districts as they currently sit now and there's a voting age population, information, et cetera, it'll give you a great idea of if you want to look at maintaining the current district line or looking at the option of redistricting in a whole new fashion. And that's a discussion that you and legal and city manager could have at a later time. You'll get those data, we hopefully, very soon. We are giving priority right now to those who have December fifteenth deadlines, those jurisdictions. And those are primarily county boards of supervisors, really large cities, et cetera, basically those that have June 2022 election. And there's a number of them. So we have a time crunch with those individuals, with those particular jurisdictions. And once we flush out the data for those particular jurisdictions, we will shift to those that have the April seventeenth jurisdictions. And I can tell you that because I've worked with you before, I've already planted a few bugs in the ear of our administrators at N D C, which I've actually told, you know, be patient, Jeff. So I'm really working as your advocate here to get this going so it'll help you with your decision making. So with that, we want to have folks be involved and through the city's website, they can find information about forthcoming meetings and workshops if you decide to go that route and at the farmer's market table and other types of things. And with respect to the public hearing, Mayor Gibbons, we really want to be able to get some information on these two questions from the community. And we'd also like to entertain any council discussion on neighborhoods and communities of interest as well. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions before you open it up and even after this.
Oh, thank you very much, Dr. Tilton. And I'm going to ask you, go ahead to take down your slides. I think we can manage that. And I'm going to offer a couple of focused discussions. So first, confirming the number of the census in Campbell in 2010 was three, thirty nine thousand, three twenty nine. The new number is forty four thousand, twenty seven?
Twenty ten was three forty nine. So twenty, twenty more.
Sorry, say that again, in twenty?
Sir, twenty ten, thirty nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen nine.
Three hundred and fourteen?
Forty nine.
Forty nine.
Like our football team.
Yeah. And the new number for 2020?
Forty four, zero, two, seven.
All right, and the delta is four, six, seven, eight?
That's correct.
All right, and that means that the delta is greater than three percent?
I don't have my calculator in front of me, but it looks that way.
Okay. All right, so in preparation for this discussion, I just wanted to offer a few focuses. In terms of direction, the Dr. Tilton's provided questions that they would like from the community as well as the council on neighborhood boundaries and communities of interest. But also, we've been asked to help with the outreach plan. And we may find that there is a need to figure out what steps to do next because we don't have all the data. But the most important starting point, if I understand correctly, and the city clerk can clarify if I'm wrong, one option is that if there is less than a three percent delta between the numbers, then the process is not required. We can, as a council, vote to just keep the boundaries the way they are. But given that the increase is greater than three percent, the council must take some type of action. And there are two actions available to us. All boundaries are within ten percent. And we don't know that yet. We don't know the count within the existing districts, if they're greater or less than ten percent. If they are, then there's no changes again required. And then the other option is that some boundaries may need to be required if the delta is greater than ten percent within each district. So with those two choices remaining to us, without having the data yet, the city clerk has requested that council also discuss needing a special discussion, can be at a regular council meeting, on a meeting to discuss when the data comes out so we can actually understand which option we want to take. And Dr. Tilton, you're shaking your head saying that's basically correct.
Yeah, that's a great move.
Okay, all right. So the council, I'll offer opportunity, please, any questions? And then we'll go to public comments. So questions first, if we may. Okay, seeing none, I would just say that I believe one of the important things is that however, the districting boundaries may or may not change. There is a commitment that no one would lose their right to vote. If they didn't vote in 2020, they would be able to vote in 2022. And I believe that that was a commitment from the council. Okay, all right. May we have opened the public hearing? And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
I don't have anybody signed up with us this evening, but I did want to point out the desk item that we sent earlier this afternoon, which had some written comments that we received through the community of interest worksheet. I wanted to make sure council received that because there was some feedback from the community in that fashion.
Right, and that just reinforces how important those information sheets are. So everyone, please go to the website and take a look at those. All right, if there's no additional public comment, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion for the council. And Councilmember Lopez, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thanks for the parameters and for the staff work on this. I, my strong preference is, and primarily because of the preference to not disenfranchise anyone for their voting cycle to change the districts as little as possible. So if it's within the delta, if, or if it's within that ten percent difference that's allowable, my preference would be not to change it. And then secondary, that if there is, if the numbers are sets that we have to change the boundaries, if we could either concentrate that in between the districts that have had an election already and reallocate those voters or the ones that have not, I think that would be a way to not have anybody lose out on the opportunity to vote while still allowing for a chance to change those boundaries if necessary.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's all. No, that's all, that's just my initial thought.
So if I may offer, I don't think we have a map, but we have five districts. Districts one and two were elected in twenty-twenty. Districts three, four, and five are up for their first district election in twenty-twenty-two. And the, what council member just spoke to, very importantly, is that members in districts two, three, four, and five do get to vote in twenty-twenty-two. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Mike, I agree, fewer changes would, would be best. But my question is, how can you ensure that everybody in those three districts votes, if there's any change? I just don't understand how, how we can dictate that the changes go into only two districts. The numbers are going to kind of dictate what we have to do, right? So, I get, my, my real question is, how can we say today, which I've, which I've heard, a commitment to not disenfranchise anyone, which is the goal?
Yeah.
How do we commit to that? I don't think it's possible, until we know the number.
So I would offer, if I was adding confusion to your question, that's the goal that council has spoken to. And we will not know until the numbers are available. And that's why it may be advisable to have a special meeting when the numbers are available.
Okay, yeah, it seems to be the only way to ensure that is to not change the boundary. I don't know there's a way to change the boundaries and not have that happen. Maybe I'm missing something.
Without having the data, anything is conjecture. So, that's a pretty substantive, I'm, the last time we spoke, the number was around forty thousand, and then I heard forty-one thousand. So the number tonight of forty-four thousand is, is a surprise.
Makes it problematic to not change. Doing the numbers, it's almost, even if you, even if you give them up evenly, I think we hit the threshold to change. And that's the problem.
And it's likely that one or, one district or another will have the bulk of the growth.
Possible, yeah.
Okay. So, Councilmember Lopez, and then possibly Councilwoman Landry and Councilmember Bybee?
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify my comments, because of the questions that, that came up. So I'm, I'm not assuming it will be possible in every case. You know, you're, you're right, we, we can't know that tonight. But I can foresee circumstances where, even if we're required to make a change, depending on where it's concentrated, you could do it without moving around anybody who has or hasn't voted, because the, those districts are concentrating either, either the west or the east side of Campbell. So I could see different possibilities, but, but you're right, we can't predict for sure.
That would be ideal, absolutely.
Councilwoman Landry?
Um, so, District one and District two that had their election in twenty-twenty, if those are less or equal, and the other three districts have more, there's a potential that people that voted in the twenty-twenty election could also potentially be able to vote in twenty-twenty-two, if the boundary moves the other way. The goal is not to move it into a district that did not vote, but it doesn't say we can't take away. So potentially, there are people that could vote again in twenty-twenty-two. Just like we can't make any commitments yet, I just want to make sure that we understand that people could be able to vote again in twenty-twenty-two.
Dusty or Dr. Tilton, any thoughts on that one?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. There's, again, without seeing the data, but there are possibilities where somebody could vote again after two years. And there might be, we don't like doing it or hearing about it, someone might be off for six years. I think we had that discussion in twenty-nineteen, we were trying to avoid that. It's kind of the nature of this beast, however, when, especially when you have huge growth, and you're really moving along. So, we, I wish I had the data for you.
Any other questions, Councilwoman Landry? Okay, Councilmember Bybee?
Are we, I thought we were in comments.
We are in comments, sorry.
I, I really would like to see as minimal change as possible, and make sure that everybody does get their, their chance to vote. And so I, and without the data, it's really hard. We could sit here all night and surmise and say this and say that. So I would be willing to wait till we get the data, have another meeting to discuss it, and really just decide if we're within that ten percent delta. And if not, then we, then we proceed. But I think we need the data in order to proceed intelligently.
I kind of guess we're all in that same, same assessment. Thank you, Councilmember Bybee. So if the discussion is somewhat finished, I would offer that the city clerk would request that, in order to begin an outreach plan and determine the extent of the outreach, data is required, so that council can determine if it's above or below the ten percent, and if the lines do have to change. And with the data, then it can be determined how much community outreach. So is council amenable? I apologize in advance for asking, calendar pressures, are they, what they are? We would need another meeting, and perhaps Dr. Tilton could tell us when they, you think we might have enough data to evaluate these options?
Well, I'm going to go back and tell our president that the city council is really, really, really asking for, and, and, because like I said, I was going to advocate for you, but I'm hoping within a couple of weeks.
Okay, so the last week of October might be realistic?
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, even, and they're saying, and, and as soon as I receive it, I'm sending it to Brian and Dusty. But the point that we also have to remember, we still have to follow the process, and have the four public hearings, and make sure that we're meeting the Fairness Act and all that stuff. If you do decide, you know, where the data show that we could move forward without moving.
Right, so having the data as soon as possible, so council can make a decision on which way to go would be important. Okay, is there consensus by council that we do require additional data, and we are amenable to having a meeting when the data becomes available, to determine what options are necessary? Whether we can keep the existing boundaries, if it's less than a ten percent delta, or whether we do have to increase or change the boundaries, if it's greater than ten percent? Is that acceptable to everyone? Councilmember Bybee, yes. Councilmember Landry, yes. Council Vice Mayor Resnikov, yes. Councilmember Lopez, yes. All right, and we'll aim for somewhere in the last week of October, if not sooner? Okay?
Mayor Gibbons, if I may offer, there's a November second regularly scheduled meeting. Would you like to target on a regularly scheduled meeting or a special?
May I offer that we've got so much on our calendar, you might have to work with the city manager to determine how that might best work?
Okay, thank you.
But at least you have some flexibility from the council.
Thank you.
My, my, my personal preference is to try and fold it into a regular council meeting, but like, tonight's meeting agenda was fairly light, so if we had one of those coming up, that might, that might work better.
I would agree as, as well, a regular meeting would be ideal, but we may not have that fortune. Councilmember Lopez?
Um, I would just say it depends for me, a little bit, because we, there are time pressures on letting potential candidates and the community know. So I think it just depends a little bit for me on when the data comes out and how soon we can get it. So I'm not opposed to doing a special session, if, if that would allow us to meet our commitments on a timely manner.
Thank you, Councilwoman Landry?
I, I don't care when the meeting is. I would say we have as many meetings as we need to.
As efficiently as possible, however.
Yes, but if we have to have two, we have two. We have as many as we need.
Well, we're going to have all the meetings that we're legally required to have, that's for sure.
Plus one.
Plus one.
Or two.
All right, is everyone comfortable with that direction to staff? I see, yes. City clerk, are you okay?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will then close that meeting and go on to item number eleven. Thank you, Dr. Tilton.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Item number eleven, it is the authorization to resubmit one Bay Area grant application. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to re, to resubmit the One Bay Area Grant Program Application for Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvements Funds for the Campbell Priority Development Area Enhancement Project.
Mayor, did you skip item ten?
Did I?
Yes, oh, ten is districting.
Yeah. No, I did skip number ten, thank you for that. Item number ten, new business. Approval of resolutions amending compensation and benefits for the confidential management and unclassified employee groups. This is a resolution and a roll call vote. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolutions amending compensation and benefits for the confidential management and unclam, unclassified employees. The presenter will be Brian Leventhal, city manager. Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, council, thank you, Councilmember Lopez, for keeping us on track there, and Mayor Gibbons for introducing this item. This item was separated from the other labor agreements that you saw in consent calendar pursuant to state law. Anytime the council is considering adjusting compensation to management employees and department heads and officers of the city, the city is required to allow public comment, and that that discussion be held publicly. So that is the purpose tonight. I'm available to answer any questions the council has. The staff report delineates the increases that are being proposed and recommended to these groups. It is similar to all of the other groups that the council has previously approved. And I would suggest, if there's not questions of the council, that you go ahead and conduct a public hearing and take any public testimony before taking action.
Thank you, and may I take note that there is a desk item with an amended, I believe it's an amended resolution.
That is correct, thank you.
So, if there are no questions, seeing none, we will open the public hearing and have any comments from the public? Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Not on this item. And I see none myself. We will close the public hearing and bring the item back to council for discussion and/or a motion. May I have a motion, Councilwoman Landry?
I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving the side letter to the memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Campbell Municipal Employees Association, CMEA.
Second.
I have a clarification question.
Let me clarify the motion.
I don't, I was just going to say, that doesn't sound right.
The, the motion should be that the city council adopt a resolution amending compensation and benefits for confidential management and unclassified employees.
Yeah, so you're reading the wrong, the wrong motion.
Well, I'm having a problem, because on my agenda, it says this is number nine, not number ten.
It should be, it's listed as item ten in the public packet, in the package.
Item ten in the public packet, yes. Oh, I know, Councilwoman Landry, the council packet was reissued on Thursday morning, and I'm going to guess the numbering may have changed, and you may not be using that revised packet.
I think that's the problem, so I'll start, make a motion again. The city coun, I recommend that the city council adopt a resolution approving the side letter and memorandum of understanding with the Campbell Municipal Employees Association.
So I don't, I'm sorry, I think that's still incorrect.
Okay, I don't know, someone else try.
Let me repeat the motion, and if it's appropriate, you can move as recommended by staff. The recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution, adopt resolutions, plural, amending compensation and benefits for confidential management and classified employees.
Okay, with the revised desk item.
Correct, thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion, and may I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Lopez. May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Hi.
Mayor Gibbons? Hi, thank you very much. And now, I will go back to item number eleven. At least I got my numbers right. This is the authorization to resubmit one Bay Area Grant Application for the Public Works Director to resubmit for an application of congestion management and air quality improvement funds for the Campbell Priority Development Area PDA Enhancement Projects. And I think Public Works Director, Mr. Capurso?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to introduce the item, but I will tell you that this has been an interesting, interesting journey with the application of these, the original grant, and how it has been, how it has evolved over the years. And, and the city finds itself with a unique opportunity that our, that our traffic engineer, Matthew Chu, will tell you about how we were able to, we have the opportunity to kind of recraft what we originally submitted all, just about five years ago, and hopefully turn that into a project that better meets the city's current needs. So with that, I will turn it over to Matthew, and then at the end, we will both be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gibbons and members of the city council.
Matthew, Matthew, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Gibbons and members of the city council. The recommendation is to authorize resubmital of the One Beer Grant Application. In twenty-sixteen, the city submitted a grant application for the Campbell PDA Enhancement Project. That project included various bike and pedestrian improvements in the downtown area. Unfortunately, we were not awarded a grant at that time. But since twenty-sixteen, the city continued to move forward and installed some of the improvements that were planned for that project. And at the same time, staff continued to hear from members of the public regarding concerns at the intersection of Civic Center Drive and Harrison Avenue. At that intersection, the streets intersected askew, so that traffic that is traveling on Civic Center Drive and making a right turn onto Harrison Avenue can do so at rather high speeds. And the motorists don't necessarily yield to pedestrians, so there's concern there. Earlier this year, we started hearing from VTA staff that they wanted to know if the city were still interested in applying for a One Beer Grant. Over time, we learned that there were leftover grant funds, and the reasons are described in the staff report. But that the city could reapply for the grant. Now, VTA did place some constraints on the resubmital. They wanted the, the conditions or terms of the original grant application to stay in place. They didn't want a wholesale change in the project scope or cost. And the conditions are, are listed here. The other constraint was a deadline. Cycle-two OPEC grant funds needed to be assigned by the deadline of January thirty-first of, of next year. Because there isn't enough time to finish a design and then pursue construction funds, our focus is on the design phase only. Now, there are some items in the project that we've already completed, and they're listed here at the top. And there are items that you can see at the intersection of Campbell Railway. There's the green bike lane and bike box. And there are items that you can see at the intersection of Campbell Railway. There's the green bike lane and bike box. And there are other items that are listed below, including a flashing beacon system that's now operational at the intersection of Orchard City Drive and Second Street. Some items that we're keeping as was part of the original grant application are shown. At the bottom. We proposed to VTA to include the improvements at the Civic Center Drive Harrison Avenue intersection. To square off the corners of the intersection to slow down traffic. And in order to keep the project in the same cost range, we proposed removing some, some items. When we proposed these changes, VTA was agreeable to the revised project scope. So our recommendation is to resubmit the grant application with the revised scope. We would be applying only for design phase funds. And the benefits of resubmitting is there's no competition for these funds. We would only be responsible for 12% local match on the federal funds that would be available. And according to VTA staff, we'd be well positioned for the next grant cycle where we would be able to pursue construction funds. So next step would be to resubmit the grant application. Request authorization to receive with the design phase from Caltrans. Then we would prepare a design. And then consider approach the city council about applying for the cycle three. Oh, bag grant funds for the construction phase. And the call for project is anticipated for mid to late next year. So here's a tentative schedule, starting from. The top line is today. We were seeking to meet that deadline end of January to get Caltrans authorization to receive with the design phase. Then we would continue with a request for proposals to hire a consulting firm to complete the design. And we anticipated would take about a year. But in meantime. The middle of next year, there would be a call for projects with the construction phase and at that time. We would. As your consideration to authorize submit all the grant application for the construction phase funds. Fiscal impact, this comparison on the top is what the terms were for the 2016 grant. The design phase would cost $625,000. The 12% local match amounts to $75,000. So the difference would be the grant amount, 550,000. When staff took another look at the revised scope and what the design cost would be. The amount was a bit higher because of the 650,000, so the toss difference is $25,000. So the city would be responsible for the original $75,000. Adding the cost difference due to inflation and just the change in scope of the project. The the city's contribution would be $100,000. And. In the staff report, we recommend. Using cities vehicle impact fees for the local match. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Matthew. And if I could also just jump in for a few minutes, if you don't mind, Mayor, I just wanted to just kind of reiterate how the scope has changed in that. Back in that original grant proposal, we had a kind of a spattering of bike and ped improvements kind of all over the downtown area. And and all were probably worthy. But what you will see in this revised scope is that this. We're we're heavier on the, on the, on the Civic Center Drive side of the downtown. And as the council knows, we've been having some challenges in that area with regard to traffic and intersection safety. Not to mention that the Harrison Civic Center intersection has been prominent in the library redesign discussions as well. So we feel that focusing on the Civic Center side will will kind of dovetail well with the improvements going on here with the Civic Center. And then, as some of you may already know, we do have some unique challenges down at Civic Center and second and third with the way. The intersections are configured and we've got driveways that are essentially directly adjacent to the roadway. So we've got to fix the ADA. Curb ramp type issues down there as well, and this will afford us the opportunity to really approach those. Intersections more holistically and hopefully take those changes on. And as Matthew said. If we can, if we're successful in this and we have every reason to believe that we will. Then we can move into the design phase and be well positioned for competing for the construction funds next year. And I would also like to add that, that if it wasn't for, for the good relationships that the staff has with VTA and. Matthew in particular, and able to go back and forth and bounce these ideas off of VTA staff and what would be eligible and what meets the criteria. We probably wouldn't have this unique opportunity to present to council, so I would like to thank Matthew for his hard work along that vein as well. And with that, we're both happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And are there any questions of staff? Councilwoman Landry?
Um. Todd, you've heard me bring this up before about a bike lane. I didn't see that in the scope. I brought that up on the fact that the bike lane ends at the bike box. Before the railroad tracks and then picks up again at Winchester. Will that be part of the evaluation process?
Unfortunately, it will not be for Civic Center Drive. Civic Center Drive does not have the width to accommodate two lanes of traffic. On street parking and a bike lane. So it's really kind of prohibited from doing that just by the space that we have. The only way that we could ever do that, and we were not contemplating that at this time, would be to. To either do a lane reduction, remove on street parking and or get rid of the, of the. Of the bulb outs at along the way. So that's not part of the thinking at this point.
But we could potentially add sharos or something to try to connect the two together.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew, for keeping us up to date on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Thanks for the presentation. Dr. Capurso, absent the availability of this grant funding. Can you speak to whether this would still be a project that the city would be pursuing and how you prioritize that?
Um. Well, at this time, it probably would not be, right? Because I think we would be challenged with with our resources. So as Matthew pointed out, you know, cycle two of the O bag grant money, which for those of you who don't know, that's the one Bay Area grant program. That opened up about five years ago and. And so we have not found other, other funding alternatives in the meantime, short of the city electing to fund the, the project in its entirety. So the alternative would have been. If this opportunity had not come along, we would probably be in the position that we're in right now. Applying for cycle three funds for to conduct to, to take on the design of of this project. It's really kind of fortuitous timing in that. If we are successful in securing the the resources to do the design. We would be, you know, essentially, we compete exceptionally well for the next round, I would say. Now, now, there are no guarantees in life, and I know that you know that from. Sitting on the pack at the VTA meetings that these things are all competitive. But certainly projects that that have a well thought out design. And current cost estimates are, will compete very well. There will still be a component of of a local match required, obviously. But we're, we're, we're probably going to be in the end, probably five years ahead of where we would be otherwise, should we, if we do not take advantage of this opportunity.
Got it. And so, thank you. And. So it, it, it sounds like this would still be a project that we, in short, that we want to do. We, we just might be pursuing it at a later point.
That, that's certainly true. I mean, we, we, we've identified, we've put some pretty good definition to these projects to the point that. I believe these components are all accounted for on the city's unfunded needs list. So that's something that we talk about when we take the, the CIP forward to council. So the, those, these are really not wish list projects. These are certainly projects that we have identified. As things that we would like to accomplish. We just haven't been able to put all the resources together to pursue it yet.
Right. And that's what I was getting at. So I thank you. And maybe I'm misunderstanding that the numbers, but why is the. Cost for design so much more than the, than actually implementing the project or is implementation not included? Within the total amount at all, including the local match?
No, this is, this is for design only, and I will tell you that, 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 that the design will be. Fairly involved, particularly when we're going to have to redesign that, that Harrison Civic Center intersection. Which will likely necessitate the, the redesign of a, of a traffic signal and how they gets implemented. And then, of course, the design down at second and Civic Center and third and Civic Center will be challenging because although we've got good infrastructure. On the south side of the street, kind of on the downtown side. We have relatively poor and inadequate infrastructure on the north side, which is the residential side. And so I would suspect that we'll see some revised, some revised curb lines and perhaps some tighter radiuses. Around those corners to to help slow down traffic and to help us meet the, because what we really need to do is to separate the private driveways. From the ADA curb ramps, because right now we're kind of in a shared driveway situation. Which isn't really in the best, in the best long term interest of the city. So I would suspect that we'll end up with a much tighter. Type radius on, on several of those corners down there.
Okay.
So it will be some pretty significant engineering design work.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Bybee, Vice Mayor Resnikov? No, no, no. Okay. Thank you. With that. Let's see, I asked if we had any quite, uh, public comments, didn't I? I've lost track. You haven't done the public comments. All right. That's questions. Do we have, if no more questions, we will open the discussion to public comment. Uh, no signed up speakers on this item. Thank you. Seeing no speakers, we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to council. For further discussion or emotion. Councilwoman Landry?
Um, yes, thank you. Todd, I heard what you said about the bike lane. I'm very disappointed that it's not part of the study. I'm looking at an aerial photo and there's only seven parking spaces on the city hall side of Civic Center. And if we're trying to be a bicycle friendly city. I would, I would have thought that having the bike lane study as part of this project would be very important. So I am disappointed that that's not part of the study and I would like it to be part of the study.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I think it's a good project that feels an important need that clearly in a variety of contexts has has come up. Director Capurso, your point is well noted about the library. I know that that's been a, that that's come up a number of times. So, so I appreciate that. And and just in general, that that's a corner we've got safety concerns. It, it still seems expensive to me just for design, but, but also understanding that. You know, this is going to be a, a, a way to maximize the, the, the dollars that that we're, we're able to get to this. So. Kudos to you and and all of staff for maximizing and being creative with, with this opportunity. And, and I have. Less of a problem with, I'm, I'm a big supporter of bike lanes, but I do think that this is a, a challenging area for that, given the narrowness of the street. So. I, I understand. I, I think in, in general. That we want to maximize where, where we can do that. And, and the only other thing I'll add is that. Just when, when we're looking at a future. You know, potential CIP projects where you might not have the funding, we're looking at, at sites. Just to make sure that we're. You know, giving equal priority, different parts of town that might not always get, get the investment. Nothing against this one in particular. I think the need is, is clear and it's important. But just to make sure that, that. Other areas get attention as well. Thank you.
I would, I would just offer that because this goes back so far. This has to do with the PDA and Campbell only has one PDA, which is in the downtown area. And it was part of a bigger picture of supporting pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the PDA area. It was sort of the basis of the grant. That may well have changed if it was being done today, but that's where it was at. Uh, okay. Uh, who would like to make a motion? Councilwoman Landry?
Um. I don't want to belabor it too much, but Liz, you made the, just made the comment that the PDA was to enhance pedestrian and bicycle. Circulation. And I, I just, we're trying to be a bicycle friendly city and get people out of their cars. And I just. I, I feel very strongly that at least in the study. That it should come back to council to let us know about the bike lane.
So staff may be able to, to clarify this, but the study has already been done. The plan has already been done and approved by council. I did not approve it. So believe me, I'm, I'm aware of it. I didn't approve it for the bicycle reasons, among other things, but it is an approved plan. Um, and this is for the implementation of the design of an improved plan. Am I risk with, there you go. Director Capurso?
Yes, I switched places on my screen. So it probably happened on yours too. That, that's exactly correct. And that's what, that's what I was going to add. I, the, the only, I mean, I, I, I do think that we have looked at, at, at bicycles and. And the various routes through town, and we certainly have some challenge there has, has have been noted by, by a few of you this evening. The. I would, I would urge you, Councilwoman Landry, to, to not look at the block in front of, in front of, in front of City Hall. That doesn't illustrate the challenges. It's really the challenges from First Street West. That's where the constraints on the roadway are. Would they really kid narrows down considerably? There is no on street parking on one side of the street already. From First Street all the way down to where it links back up. With, with the other loop streets almost at Winchester. And so there really are some roadway challenges there. So it's not necessarily. A choice between eliminating seven parking spaces in front of City Hall. Because even if we played that out, that would only take a bike lane to First Street, and then we'd have this same challenge after that. So. We really, we really struggle with, with the bike routes and whether they should be bike lanes or bike routes. And. At this point, I will note that we do have sharos at the bike box, which is. At railway and the, the sharos lead you actually through, through Campbell Avenue. In between the loop streets and do not lead you under the loop streets, but we can certainly consider the installation of sharos on the loop streets. As not, you know, as something we do operationally, and that's something we can take a look at, but not to be part of the design of this project.
Actually, the sharos are included as part of the scope.
Well, there you go.
Well, there you go.
That's why we bring our smart staff to these meetings. Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or is someone would like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll do, I'll make a motion that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the public works director to resubmit the one Bay Area grant O bag. Program application for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement, CMAQ funds for the Campbell priority development area. PDA enhancements project.
Is it motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bybee, second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call, please? As Councilmember Bybee?
I.
Councilwoman Landry?
I.
Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Vice Mayor Resnikov? Vice Mayor Resnikov? We, I think that was an I, but you were muted. I got your voice. I'll acknowledge that you, you have said I. Sorry, Mayor Gibbons. I. I might give you dispensation for the next part of the meeting. Okay. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. And we will now go to. The last item on the agenda this evening, which we rarely get to these days, which is council committee reports. And we will go with slides, I believe, beginning with. And we will go with slides, I believe, beginning with Councilmember Bybee.
I have no report.
Okay. Councilwoman Landry?
I forget how far back we go to when we did the last committee reports.
Could you give an update on, on the, was it thirteen eighty-three or whatever it is?
Uh, yes, um, there was a presentation last week by the National, I think it was through the National League of Cities. Uh, I unfortunately could not attend because we had our study session on the general plan. But it was presented to the Recycling and Waste Reduction Committee and anybody else that was interested. The upcoming committee for the recycling and waste reduction, which is in two weeks, I think, will be having another update. I think since the last time I made comments, I attended the Chamber of Commerce events. They had a lunch. I think that was, since I can't remember how far back we go.
Um, could I ask clarification? Is thirteen eighty-seven, it was at some point being postponed or minimized or whatever, but it is now going fully forward in January of twenty twenty-two?
It's thirteen eighty-three, just for clarification. And it was, it was SB six nineteen that was trying to delay it. And I don't have an update on that tonight.
Okay. If you would, next time around, please. Uh, okay. Councilmember Lopez?
Uh, my main thing is that I, I was very excited to be a delegate to the annual California League of Cities Conference and, and, and represent the city as a voting delegate. So I, I did per staff feedback and, and some research, opposed to proposals that were made, which nonetheless went through. And I think the next step is that there'll be referred to a committee, which may then refer back to another committee, which may then bring it back before the regular body. So.
Oh, one that, one on the, on the sales tax is really bad.
Yeah. But, but the, the, the gist of, of, uh, you know, kind of that, that circuitous process I just named is that with the amendments, it was, I think, watered down significantly from initially, they wanted the league to take a pretty strong stance against it. And I, I, I do think it got pretty weakened with the amendment. So if, if that's any consolation, but I, I definitely agree with you. We, we don't want to be pitting cities one against the other. But other than that, really informative conference and, uh, uh, attended some interesting sessions on census data, some takeaways, which I, I shared with staff in preparation for our discussion tonight. Happy to talk more if anybody has specific questions about that. But one, you, you know, one, one takeaway is that we're, we're certainly, I think, getting the data back much sooner than was initially, initially feared. And that especially for, for the Bay Area, we did not have the undercount that, that we feared. And that they're really, I, I mean, the, the efforts, especially in this county, really paid off. Um, and, and we would have, even though we lost a congressional seat, we would have lost another one most likely had those investments not been made. So seems to apply. I know, I know our city participated in that. And some other sessions on supporting our API residents and, and what we can do. A, a, a lot of which I'm happy to report our city is already doing or has participated in. So great conference and thank, thanks everyone for the opportunity.
Thank you. And let's see. Vice Mayor Resnikov, to save your voice, shall we let you come back another time?
I was just going to say, just Savaka. Typical good return rates of animals runs about ninety-eight percent of all animals coming in, dogs, cats, wildlife, going back either to their homes, adopted or wild.
Yeah, Savaka is this extraordinarily wonderful organization. And whenever anyone finds a stray animal, I always tell them to go to Savaka.
People don't know that they are, they are a no, a no kill. They, they clearly surpassed the no, the no kill numbers.
Yeah, they're phenomenal.
Yeah.
Let's see, for me, I have, where's my list? Oops. Okay. The Association of Bay Area Governments, we had a meeting and basically coming up on October twenty-first, there will be a vote to approve Plan Twenty Fifty. And let's see, the Campbell Historical Museum and Angely House has had a board meeting. You heard about the events that they're doing. And let's see, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy continues doing its wonderful things. I won't bore you with all of that. We had a West Valley Mayors and Managers meeting, talked about some new license plate reading programs that Los Gatos is implementing, which might be of some help controlling crimes. And as a deterrent, I also attended an energy efficiency program put bond by Bayren's. I strongly encourage anyone who's looking to improve the energy efficiency of their building, of their home or their building and or looking at new energy efficient improvements that can be made. Bayren's offers many, many free programs and is an excellent resource to individuals. We all attended the general plan study session on the twenty-ninth. And oh yes, the museum is looking for people to decorate the rooms for Christmas. Wonderful, fun thing to do with a group of friends. They have lots and lots of decorations. It's just having people come in, identify a theme and go to town. That's always fun. I met with Supervisor Ellenberg and we discussed Measure A funds and Project House Keys and how opportunities may exist for those types of housing projects in Campbell. And on Saturday, I attended the Los Altos Community Center Grand Opening. And this is a really important project because it is a hundred percent electric. They are providing ninety percent, ninety percent of their operational energy with their solar systems and they have battery backup for resilience. It's the first of its kind as a public building in our county and could be a great resource for our designs on the Campbell Police Building going forward. So really well done projects. And with that, if there's nothing else, we will look forward to our next meeting, which is November something. No, October something. Uh, we've had so many meetings. October nineteenth is our next meeting and we have a study session on the housing element also on the nineteenth, right? So we've got a full plate and I hope the public joins us for the Housing Element Study Session. Thank you all. Thanks, staff. Bye.